I completely forgot about it.
Oh.
It's all roses to you.
We do. That's not. Uh, but I can check down the whole stop.
Ready?
This is gonna say that I look most certainly ready. Yeah, this is what I'm doing. Not a particular, I have a whole this. But over uh, the entire time uh, it's terrible. So I was like, I'm actually on this. I'm not gonna talk about that though. Yeah, I did. I saw that on.
Right. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Kevin. Do we have a quorum?
You do have a quorum.
So, welcome everyone to the Thursday, October sixth, twenty twenty-two Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. Here in the room, we have Commissioner Pam Treese, as well as Vice Chair Willie. And on Zoom, we have Commissioner Rogers. I assume that Commissioner Phi will be joining us shortly. So, uh, we are having just a morning roundtable today. This is our second in-person hybrid roundtable. So the, the main topic for today will be talking about our community strategic plan work. But before we do that, we'll do some of our ordinary housekeeping. Usually mindful of the fact that, wow, it's October already. And there really aren't that many work weeks before the close of our business year, the second week of December. So, uh, looking at the rolling agendas, we have quite full meeting agendas here in the month of October, uh, reflective of the fact that we have a lot of work, that good work that is being done. That includes improvements to policies, programs, and making sure our community has the opportunity to see our investment decision-making. We do have an extra meeting this month. It is next Friday, October fourteenth.
Bless you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, everyone. I hope I was a little far from the mic.
That's kind of a human thing to do.
Thank you. There are three or four annual meetings that, uh, we have each year. One of them, uh, it, well, two of them I know are by, uh, regulation where we have a joint meeting with the Fair Board per, uh, at least an MOU. By statute, we have an annual tour of the jail. I don't know if our annual meeting with the Housing Advisory Committee is, you know, by statute or just by practice. Uh, but that's always been a good meeting for us to sync up with that very important advisory committee and hear about conditions of our community. And they, the Comey and team usually try to ensure that we have some good speakers as well. Then when we're looking at the month of November, unlike today where we're only, today's a little unusual in that we're only having our roundtable in the morning. If we look at November, uh, meeting-wise, we only have three Tuesdays of board meetings. We will have a full and rich agenda for our November second roundtable. But all of our work sessions are quite full as well. And the reason why we only have three meetings in November is because we have the annual AOC conference the week of November fourteenth. And then the following week is the Thanksgiving week. And our, uh, multiple staff members have family who come in and traveling and whatnot. So part of, uh, our great place to work is to acknowledge those special holiday weeks. So it just puts, you know, a little bit more pressure on us to make sure that we are, are mindful of that. And Commissioner Willie, I know you've got your vacation in November. Are you going to try to zoom in again, or are you going to give yourself a true vacation and?
Depends on what you have on the docket.
Oh, okay. Well, you've, you've got the rolling agenda, so you gotta feel for that already, so.
I think Pam, just to, just to follow up on that, remember in our ALC meeting, uh, for the ALC conference, they're gonna take a vote, and I think I will zoom in for that meeting.
You said you would.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
For AOC.
Yeah, and they're gonna do the vote differently than they have been the last few years. So, um, you might need to. You're talking online in the morning versus the afternoon.
Yeah, I'll find out what it is.
I can keep.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Willie, updated as to when you're talking about the business meeting and you're talking about the election of officers and that whole.
Yes, I thought that was Friday afternoon.
No, it's Thursday. It's always Thursday.
As long as it doesn't mess up with my morning golf, I'll be okay.
Hey, we don't control that agenda.
No, yeah, if Thursday afternoon would be fine.
I think it depends on how well he plays.
I don't do anything depending on that.
They're usually quite good with, uh, their agenda, uh, setting, so. Then, uh, we do have a town hall slated for Wednesday evening, November thirtieth. And, uh, put a, put a note on town hall, and I'll come back to it in a minute. Then we're into the month of December. And this too will be, meeting-wise, a very short month. Because of the town hall on the thirtieth, for the roundtable on December first, we're only going to meet in the afternoon. So, um, sure, if you want to stack yourself up with meetings that Thursday morning, but the idea was that we're gonna have a long night the night before, so.
And the night before that is our evening meeting as well.
That's right, so. Yep, yep, so I for one will be sleeping in. But I don't have a dog who has to go out first thing in the morning, so lucky me. Then, uh, we have two Tuesdays worth of meetings. And this is, you'll see in the rolling agenda, where we have to follow through and make sure that we have our, uh, annual performance evaluations with our CAO and our county council. So those are on the agenda, in addition to all the work that we need to get done before the close of the business year. In addition, we have on Wednesday, and we might, it might help us if we have a column in there just to remind us, Kevin, that we have a CWS training day on Wednesday, December seventh. I'm afraid, without having a skinny column that lets us know that, that we might lose sight of that. So that would help us. Thank you. So those are the, the biggest highlights that I wanted to try and draw our attention to, with regard to the rolling agenda, before I come back to town hall. Before we move off of rolling agenda specifically, are there any questions or comments that any of us may have? Go ahead, Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I do want to just highlight a couple items on the rolling agenda, because these have been, um, highlighted as a board interest or board priority. So if we look at November, on November first, uh, it is a joint presentation with HR and OEICE on workforce and succession planning. This will include this year's equal employment opportunity, um, uh, data. And, um, Chair, this was just updated yesterday, so if you have an earlier version, I'll make sure to note what, what may have changed. And then I do want to lift up a new proclamation on November first, and that is, um, Operation Greenlight for Veterans. This is a national effort, um, to draw attention to our veterans. That will be a new proclamation. Moving to November twenty-ninth, um, just lifting up because this is board follow-up and a board priority to come forward. The Climate Action Plan scoping, so the next steps in that discussion. And then you'll see on November twenty-ninth, in the updated version, uh, placeholders for November twenty-ninth, and I'm switching to December now, December sixth and December thirteenth. We are working with our auditor, John Hutzler, to kind of wrap out his, um, his term and determining what capacity we have for him to have follow-up reports to the board. So far, he has, at this time, he has requested three separate dates. I am really concerned about board capacity to have this amount of time with the auditor. So David Martinez and I are working through that with John. But just wanted to lift that up if you wonder what those placeholders are for in the updated version.
Three different audits that he's gonna have wrapped up by then?
Correct. He, he's looking for, the first request are for audit, um, follow-ups. And then his third meeting request is for kind of, uh, wrap-up of his term a- as auditor.
And that's with the board, excuse me.
What? Go ahead.
That's with the board and staff?
I don't have any further information. He has just requested the dates at this time.
I'm wondering if, uh, it might be useful to have the wrap-up in the evening meeting of December thirteenth and the other two topics as presentations on the sixth. Just as an idea. But I haven't done the math to see how long that meeting might be on the sixth with everything else.
Yeah.
That's on there, so.
Staff will take care of doing the math.
And, uh, I'm just noticing now, do we have a HAWK meeting in December?
Currently, Madam Chair, nothing has been scheduled yet, so we're just holding that thirty minutes.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, I see. Okay, thank you.
The last item that I want to raise for awareness is on December sixth. It, uh, hopefully this is the version that you're viewing now. We do have CA, uh, County Administration Office and Finance for ninety minutes for the first present, first run at our CIP.
Oh, yeah.
Um, this will not, I want to be a full CIP. However, we will be taking steps to that process. I've heard, uh, from several commissioners, interest in really understanding, more specifically, concerns on our current state and of facilities, given the jail conversation and the upcoming jail tour.
Yep, yep. Well, I'm just relieved that I've been able to take the facilities list that, on behalf of the organization, I carried in the board initiatives. And because Angie and company have caught the list.
Completed pass.
Yes, yes.
The pass is complete.
Yeah.
And now it is to incorporate that into a CIP. So we really haven't understated, not only the current state of our facilities, but resources to maintain those facilities and expand.
Yep, yep, yep.
Then you give it to Greg and say, how are you gonna do this?
Oh, this is a collaborative effort. We're one Washington County.
Involves us too.
He's got them, he's got the money machine, or the currency.
So, um, town hall for, uh, November. So, uh, just reflecting on how things have, have gone over these last few years and, uh, the state of affairs. I was, uh, I had this idea, and I talked to Ms. Angie and some staff, rather than having a chair end-of-year message and, and a town hall before the end of the year. And in anticipation of our annual State of the County, where I've tried to make sure we have all five of us present. I thought, why not mix it up? Take that town hall and have a theme of each commissioner just highlighting, what are your, what is your one or more proudest accomplishments of this last year? You know, and it's not just of yourself necessarily, it could be of the board, it could be of the whole county government operation. And not a big production at all. If you'd like to, uh, have an, uh, a slide that illustrates something in pictures, great. But just something that, uh, is somewhat fun and easy and still have that usual format of time for questions from the community as well.
I like that idea. I, 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 I think we're certainly done with reviewing our budget process. That's, we, we've done that, and I think that, uh, for, for a scheduled town hall, we need to be creative in how we approach it. And that sounds like a, a great idea to me, plus it takes one more thing off of the schedule. So I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to be thinking about my, my top, top ten or what.
No, let me emphasize the word informal, right? This is not meant to be a whole lot of work, right? Just put a little thought into it, speak extemporaneously.
When would we do that?
The town hall's been scheduled for November thirtieth. Was that a Wednesday? I think I said earlier. Yes, Wednesday.
Yeah.
Chair is not here that day.
I'm actually returning that day, so I won't be until about midnight. So I can't even zoom from that.
We could consider a recorded message. I didn't set the date, so I don't know.
No, that's right, and I like that idea. Um, so, uh, we'll work around that.
You wanna reschedule?
No, now we're just thinking there, December gets too missed.
Well, unless you want to do it, uh, ooh, I was about to say the night of December sixth, but we have that all-day CWS training.
Actually, the seventh, but yeah.
Yeah, the next day, and we have the roundtable on, we could do it. What day of the week is December second?
December second is a Friday.
Oh, oh, yeah, the roundtable's Thursday. Yeah, December's a short month, so. But think lightweight, five minutes.
Yeah.
That's it. Okay, cuz there's five of us, five minutes.
We can do something on that, yeah.
Okay, great. Terrific, okay. We'll leave it at that. You're s- you're still here for the November second roundtable in person? Okay, great, good, cuz that's gonna be a, a really full one. Taking stock of the twenty-twenty-two board initiatives set up for twenty-twenty-three. And, and I'm thinking about a fun exercise for us to go through. So, yeah. So that'll be a good one to do in person. Okay, that's it from me. Anything else before we get to our main topic of today?
At some point, I, I would like to request a conversation about our town halls for twenty-three. So I know that that's on our.
That's on the list, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I just want to make sure that we're, we're talking about that. And I appreciate the creativity in dealing with this upcoming one, but. And maybe it's a, it's a larger issue, really. It's our, our discussion on the community.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's on, I'm looking at, is that on the?
I can't remember where I had that, but I certainly.
I'm looking too, I don't remember.
It might have been on our, our roundtable plan or something, but, yep. Yep, we need to do it, don't worry.
Okay. Don't see it in November.
It would be a different document.
Oh.
It wouldn't be in the rolling agenda.
Okay.
It's on the roundtable.
It'd be the round, yeah.
No worries. Okay, uh, Commissioner Rogers, out there on Zoom, any thoughts before we move into strategic planning?
Nope, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, great. All righty, well, without further ado, we'll turn it over to you, Ms. Angie and Ms. Fuller, about strategic planning.
Great. Well, we're really happy and excited to talk about next steps in strategic planning. And Rachel's going to lead this, uh, discussion with your board. And really, the purpose of today's discussion is to get direction from the board. What next steps, um, do you want to take? A strategic plan, um, has been a top priority for the board, I know since I started. And I know since, uh, as Commissioner Willie had just mentioned to me, um, this morning, he was looking forward to this conversation and getting going on the strategic plan. And I, and I know, um, others have expressed that interest too. In today's presentation, Rachel will talk, um, speak a bit to how, uh, proposal to phase this work in. We need to think about, um, the capacity we have here at the county, given the many priorities and, uh, work plan items that we have, um, currently underway and in the queue. So Rachel, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you so much, Tanya. And Chair Harrington, Commissioners, I'm really pleased to be with you. Rachel Fuller, Assistant County Administrator. And as Tanya said, I'll give a presentation, but the goal is really to listen to your input and to have a conversation. So, um, so we're here, uh, thanks to your leadership, to develop a, a community strategic plan. And we, as a reminder, we had the Government Finance Officers Association here in July for a roundtable presentation. They discussed the work by their organization to develop a framework for strategic planning called Rethinking Strategic Planning and Rethinking Budgeting. And we've taken their work, your feedback, and developed a one-Washington County framework and approach for your consideration. Um, again, we're looking forward to your input and, uh, on the process and next steps. And we're gonna go through the why, why we, we might consider a strategic plan, the what, what a strategic plan might look like for Washington County, and then how we're gonna go, how we would propose to go about doing it. So let's talk a little bit about the why. The county strategic plan, uh, was first initiated in nineteen eighty-six and updated in nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-three. So take a minute to think about where you were in nineteen eighty-six, and you don't need to share. Uh, but, but think about that time, what were you doing? I, I've shared with others that one of my first memories what, from this time, is being homesick from elementary school on the day that the Challenger Space Shuttle disaster occurred. A few other points of reference, uh, Chernobyl happened in that year, which I had to check that a couple of times. The Cosby Show was the most popular show on TV, and Top Gun premiered, which seems relevant because Maverick just came out this year. Um, and in the realm of technology, approximately ten percent of households had home computers in nineteen eighty-six. And Intel's first chip that, uh, made home computers as fast as mainframe computers of that time was released. So remember, it wasn't until two thousand and seven that the first generation iPhone was released. And now in twenty-twenty-two, the devices that we carry in our pa- our pocket are much more powerful than those home computers of nineteen eighty-six. So the pace of technological change, in addition to all of the other social societal changes, um, that are up on the side, and there's many more, really blew me, blows me away.
I couldn't get past the fact that you were in elementary school.
I'll take that as a compliment.
I can't relate to that.
Commissioner. Uh, the county has responded to changes in regulations and in services since nineteen eighty-six, and, and things have certainly changed. In the nineteen nineties, a series of measures were passed that really disrupted the way that property taxes were levied here in Oregon. The result was a freeze on property taxes, a reduction in local control over funding, and inequities in tax cre- rates between communities and even between neighbors. And services that the county provides have changed with the passage of the regional affordable housing measures. Uh, in twenty-eighteen, House Bill two thousand and one, the Middle Housing Code, and the passage of the American Rescue Plan in response to the pandemic. The Washington County community has also changed since nineteen eighty-six, as has the organization that serves it. In nineteen eighty-six, the population of Washington County was two hundred and eighty thousand and ninety-two percent white. The county had a workforce of eight hundred and seventy-six FTE, and the county budget was a hundred and seven million. Today, Washington County has a population of more than six hundred thousand and is increasingly ethnically and racially diverse. And the total county budget is one point six billion, and we have more than two thousand three hundred employees providing services to the community every day. Another thing that has changed is the problems that we're confronting as a community. The issue of homelessness is certainly one of the more vexing community issues of our time and demonstrates how complex and interconnected the issues and the response to the issues must be. Understanding this issue requires an analysis of federal, state, and local actions. And, and our response requires coordination and cooperation from community partners and multiple county departments, including law enforcement, land use and transportation, health and human services, facilities, and more.
One of those pictures, the, the cleanup from Beaverton Creek?
Yes. Thanks. And thanks to your leadership, we are creating a solid foundation for a new community strategic plan. The board passed the Equity Resolution in twenty-twenty that directed the organization to pursue just and equitable outcomes for the community. The board initiatives that you referenced earlier, Chair, are projects identified by the board as being a high priority for the community. And Design the Future is an organizational effort to continuously improve the county's organi- the county organization's culture, systems, and processes. I'm not gonna spend much time on this, but this is a reminder of the change management framework and fundamentals and the process of change that GFOA spoke to in their, their presentation. We usually work, uh, in this, in this field at the, the structural change level, the policies and the practices. But as we move forward with a strategic plan and through these organizational improvement efforts, I think it's really helpful to, to be able to think about some of these other levers that might, that we might need to look at, relationships and connections, mental models that really need to, um, we need to look at to really implement transformative change in the community and the organization. So we move to strategic planning now. We talked a little bit about the why, now we're gonna move to the what. So first, we define a couple of key terms, uh, for the conversation today. Vision or goals are long-term, long-term, uh, fundamental improvements to the community. These would define your goals for the community. And answer the question, what are the most important community outcomes to achieve and the most important community problems to solve? Equitable and authentic community engagement to define these goals and vision will be essential. And this includes communities who may not have trust in local government, uh, because of historical exclusion. Strategies define the direction and priorities. They provide operational and policy guidance and allow the organization to align around the vision. They're focused. No organization can do everything at once and require prioritization of the most important issues. And then tactics are specific actions taken to implement a strategy. They're prioritized and revisited office often. This is the strategic planning process. You saw this in the GFOA presentation, and you've probably, uh, are familiar with this through, through some of, some of the work that you've already done. Uh, the first couple steps are highlighted in blue. This is the, the establishment of the problems, the goals, understanding what's most important to the community. And again, authentic community engagement is essential to this first step. And I've included an excerpt from a dra- the draft RFP demonstrating that, the, demonstrating the organization's commitment to centering the community in the development of the vision and goals based on your leadership.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
The draft RFP for what?
Thank you. And I will get to that. I got ahead of myself. That would be one of our next steps would be to.
It's okay.
Issue an RFP for a contractor to help us with this work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if the last three years have taught us anything, it's that life is uncertain. And so we will be establishing a rolling plan, proposing a rolling plan. And you saw this also in the GFOA presentation, where the vision or the goals would be constant for five to 10 years, but strategies would be revisited. You know, every two years and actions and tactics would be revisited and. There's a lot here, so we're going to spend some time on this plan, on, on this slide. So we talked about the why, the community has changed. We talked about the what, the establishment of a new community strategic plan. And now we're going to talk about the how. And we are, are in the process of developing a robust management system to implement and help inform the strategic plan. So you can think of, yeah.
Please. Question here. You refer to this as a community strategic plan. And I think, I think I'd like just a moment to clarify that because I, I think it's important to, to raise that piece up because many of us refer to it as a county strategic plan. And, and can you, can you define the differences between those? I think it's good for us, but it's also good for anybody in the public.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. And there are some distinctions, and that's a pretty big scope. And there's a difference in scope between the two. When, when we talk about, when I'm using the words, community strategic plan, that's some of the language that I've heard from the board. But what I'm really referring to is that co-created vision, goals with the community.
Great.
And then the strategies and tactics are how the organization works. Tim.
I just wanted to have that clarified because we're not asking the community to have a strategy to be asking ourselves, but with their input.
And we're, right, and we're asking the community, what are those most important problems to solve?
And I just wanted to clarify.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So think about an iceberg. The top 20% of the iceberg is all that's visible. And the strategic planning process and the community accountability system is really that visible piece that we're talking about here. So on the, on the top layer, you see the strategic plan process, establishing a vision, defining the problem, defining the strategies and tactics. This is all going to be very visible. The community accountability system is how we know that we're successful. What does success look like? How do we know that we're solving the problems we set out to do? And then the management system is everything below the iceberg that really represents the 80% of the work that we do as an organization to deliver services to the community. So I, and just a note about the community indicators. The intent would be to develop, in conjunction with the community, a data-driven methodology that could include statistically valid surveys here so that we, so that we're taking a data-driven approach and we're being really clear with the community about what success would look like. So the rest of the iceberg is underwater and represented by the light blue boxes. And, and again, as I said, this is the day-to-day work that the organization does, including permitting, caring for adults in custody, collecting property tax payments, road construction, the internal system that to manage and support a workforce of 2,300. And these blue boxes represent those systems. Greg Munn, the county's chief financial officer, spoke last month about long-term financial planning, capital and operating budgets, and these improvements are underway. And the other boxes are really in different stages of maturity throughout the organization. And there are many innovative practices happening throughout the organization that could be expanded countywide. You'll see on the, on the left, an identification of services and service levels. This is, this really would identify what the core county services are, both those that we do independently and those that we do that are shared with the state. Okay, so as I mentioned, that integrated strategic plan management system is the goal. That's the goal at the end of the day that we want to get to. But I wanted to provide a little bit more specific information about deliverables and how we'll get there along the way. As Tanya mentioned, we're suggesting a phased approach to the work. And starting in 2023 with a community engagement to develop the community vision and outcomes. We would define those core services through a service and service level inventory, answering the questions, what services do we provide, to whom, and at what level? We begin an equity assessment where we're developing a model to assess equitable equity in our services, including equitable outcomes and equitable access to services. And we'd continue work on the financial plans, the capital improvement plans, the long-term financial plan, and the budget redesign that, that Greg spoke of last month. That work in 2023 would serve as a foundation for the development of strategies and tactics in 2024. And then in 2025, we would really see an integration of the strategic plan and the management framework. So we're here today to talk, to seek your input. The next step would be to engage the Advisory Committee on Racial Equity. As I mentioned, we would be, then we would plan to issue an RFP for a consultant to help us with the community engagement work and the development of the goals and the visions. And we would work with ACRE. This is envisioned in their charter to review that scope, to help assist with the, the selection process of the consultant. And then the work would begin in 2023. So as Tanya said, mentioned, and as I said at the beginning, we're really here to listen. I put these questions up on the board to get the conversation started, but this is your meeting. And we're here to listen and, and answer questions and, and participate in the conversation. So thank you very much for your time.
So I'll facilitate the board input here. But before I do that, I do want to note that at our roundtable, July 22nd, last summer, we had a facilitated discussion where we talked about the strategic planning. And I know that Ms. Angie and Ms. Fuller and team have reviewed that input, and it's in here. So I hope you don't feel like, get burdened at all that you have to reshare any of that. But at the same time, if there are things that are key ingredients for you, it's okay to, to raise those again. I just wanted to reassure you that they have incorporated that feedback. And I'll look to them to see if there's anything else they want to add with that regard, in that regard. No, okay, okay. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? Who would like to kick off our discussion?
Rachel, I'll start on the second to the last slide. The RFP, the idea of engaging the Advisory Committee on Racial Equity. That's. Slide 16. The idea is for that group to contribute the development of the RFP. So there will be really an equity lens applied on the RFP. Okay. And.
But could, could I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Could you remind me again what the scope of the RFP? Will the RFP go to that three-year phased approach?
Thank you for that question, Chair. What we're, what we would propose is to put everything in the RFP as a phased approach. So that would include.
So hiring a consultant to help us through that phased approach?
Correct.
Okay. I wasn't clear on it, so I needed a pause for a second.
Potentially a team of consultants to help us through that approach.
Okay. And then now I'm on slide 14, or 15, sorry, 15. And similar question Chair Harrington asked. Why this long? This is very prolonged process. And I think when we started this conversation, I was in the end of the impression that it will go all the way to 2025. And the reason being I asked was, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in Washington County. And I think when you were talking about the societal history and what happened, I was more looking into like, well, what about, what, what really changed in Washington County in terms of like those years? And for example, one thing I share with people is the fact that Washington County, our meetings wasn't online. And I think that's something to celebrate and history to share because people, because now people can go back and watch our videos and watch our, we, you know, and the fact that anybody can look into what we're talking about and the fact that that wasn't available. So I think that's the one history. And then back in 2021, I mentioned that institutional history and transferring that is really key and seeing where, what role can Commissioner Rogers play in terms of that transfer of history and knowledge so that we don't leave any stone unturned? And I don't know what Commissioner Rogers is planning about running for office again or not running. But if he does, doesn't run, the 25 prolongs that, that will be after. So I just want to make sure that we get all that history out of his brain and into this and, and figure out how do we incorporate that institution. So just basically in a nutshell, tell me more the reasons why this is like going all the way to 2025.
Happy to. And this, we can certainly have a conversation about this. The thinking behind it is that we are developing things like a capital improvement plan, a long-term financial plan, department work plans, the identification of services and service levels. We're doing that now. And that information may be something that the board would want to use when we develop the strategies. So that's why the sequencing, that's why.
So in a conversational standpoint, because that's the whole point of roundtables. I'm not at all surprised that it's mapped out as three years. Frankly, I think there, it's going to roll into a fourth year simply because of our goals of doing this with community and there are different stakeholders. And this, they're not full-time on this subject, right? But also because of what we've learned, I'll just speak for myself, because what I've learned about what's in place for our county government functionality and all the services that we need to keep delivering while we're working on this 21st century plan, it's just going to take time to do this work. I think that's, it's a very prudent plan. But I won't be surprised if it gets adjusted into a fourth year. And quite frankly, from the get-go of back in 2019, when we were talking about this, I, I knew it would be a multi-year project and that it might lead to our also empowering a charter review committee at some point. There may be some other things that need to occur. And I've always expected that there would be a change in Commissioner makeup during those phases. I think it's also important to note that just because it's a three-year, potentially four-year plan, we will feel changes as we move along through this process. You know, the, the vision is, that's the first step. We'll feel the changes that that imparts in the organization. So I, I don't see it as, I guess I've always seen a strategic plan as kind of a work in progress, you know, all the way through. To get to where the, the, with, we've incorporated all components of this. May take three years, but I think we're going to see some big changes. We're already seeing, we've, we've implemented a lot of changes already that are going to be incorporated in this. And the vision is going to be informed by the work that, that we, along with staff, have done to date. So I guess I don't, I'm not, I'm not as concerned because I think we're feeling it as, as we move forward. And I'm, I'm happy we're in the process. But so I, does that make sense in terms of the impact?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not debating any of the, your point. I, I think for me, as somebody, somebody that works for government, and I know the rumor is government moves slow. But this seems like we're are moving slow and, and actually could have been done earlier. I don't think, my opinion, if we're hiring a consultant, I think we can shorten the time and really get our. But you put a lot of thought into this, Rachel. I'm not debating your timeline you put together. I trust your judgment and your professional experience. I'm just thinking that it's just seemed to me long, three years. And then I'm sure I'll let Willie and Roy Rogers, the money people, the numbers people, ask those questions. But the cost of it will come up too. How much will that cost? And, you know, and, and is there a part of this that can be done internally rather than outsourcing? So those are some of the stuff I was thinking. But, but so whatever, if we can, I think four years of a strategic planning seems a long time. Three years seem a long time to me when I was reviewing this material, and I was like, why three years? But if you think that's the time it will take, I'm happy to.
So Commissioner, if I, I don't think for an organization this size, three years is a long time at all.
That's your opinion.
Across, across, you know, the, the facts of strategic plan development in the different departments being multi-year efforts, generally two. And if this is organization-wide with widespread community engagement, three years is pretty tight. So I think it's, it's a large organization. That's what we're talking about here. Not just at, at a siloed individual department level.
You heard one opinion, you heard another opinion. So there you have it.
I, I appreciate the input. And what I might offer is that, what I'm hearing is that we really look at what some of those interim steps might be. For example, there may be strategies that are developed as we go through the process because of something that we learn. So it can be iterative. And, and also, we are, we're, we are going to initiate a rolling plan anyway. So it will be something that isn't just done and, and wrapped up with a bow. It will be something that becomes part of the organizational culture and the way of doing things to.
In 1986, it was not unusual to timestamp strategic plans. And that's, that's, that doesn't mean because it was timestamped, there aren't things that are relevant. But it also means that it was, it would, the strategic plan was, was designed in that, in that period. And so from my perspective, we look back, see what is, was true and relevant then and continues to be true and relevant now, and move it forward. And my, also my experience is that strategic planning process isn't something that's, that is in a time warp. It is something that is iterative, it moves forward, it follows the development of the community.
It is something that is iterative, it moves forward, it follows the development of the community, follows the development of the organization, the social trends, whether they be workforce, whether they be other economic trends. So it, it, it moves along in the process. And unfortunately, in eighty-six, we didn't see that. We didn't see it in, in the corporate world, nor did we see it in, in, in this world. So, but that doesn't, that doesn't eliminate the, the value of the work that was done then, nor does it mean that whatever the tenants were at that point don't become part of the vision as we move forward.
Well, if you're asking me to respond, there's nothing I would disagree with. Even like the US Constitution, the framers did some awfully good work. And in, in terms of, you know, two thousand twenty-two, things are quite changed. But that, 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 there, there's still some basic values and this, these values, if we would state that upfront.
Yes, so that very, very good and operative question, Ms. Angie and Ms. Fuller. When can we look forward to a time when we'll have a draft set of information for the board to weigh in on? Do we have to wait until twenty twenty-three? The end of twenty twenty-three? I mean, do we have to wait until there's a consultant? I mean, because, come on, we've been talking, I've been talking about this with my colleagues, different form of colleagues in twenty nineteen versus, well, twenty, anyway. We want to write some of these things down so we don't have to keep bringing them up.
I'm happy to try to answer that. The board is our closest connection to the community. You are our closest connection to the community. And so if there is, that's why we're here today, to, to seek your input. And if we want to have an, another conversation about looking back to affirm some of those tenants, we can absolutely schedule that or do that now.
So some of these things were already written down from our notes from July of twenty twenty-one. So we just want, this is great in terms of the planning effort. But we have some of that foundational stuff written down and we'd like to bring it in together without having to wait for a full plan for a three-phased approach.
Absolutely. I think we can.
I think that's what I'm getting out of all this.
We'll take the feedback today and we'll be able to come back with that information by the end of the calendar year. I'm not prepared by, right now to say what date, but to your board by the end of the calendar year.
And it may be some, it's a partial draft of a vision, perhaps, or just some basic tenants. And hopefully we have room in our December roundtable agenda to just confirm some of that thinking. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
It does, as long as we're looking at community testing as well.
Out into the future, you betcha, you betcha.
We'll explore how that can be incorporated. Take, take this conversation, the roundtable conversation as part of that draft RFP. So that information is included in the RFP.
I don't know about that. I don't know. I think board input is board input as a support document versus necessarily putting it into a request for proposals. I just, you're losing me there.
Okay, I don't.
I don't know why an RFP would include the statement cities are best provider of services and countywide dollars for countywide services.
Because those are, it, those are the grounding, that's the grounding information that the board has set as direction.
Okay, I, I don't really, I don't feel that I would be weighing in on the details of the RS, RFP in terms of how it's written, so.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that there's.
That's what I'm reacting to.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that there's some context that which, that the board wants to make sure that we've captured. And, and so let us think about how to do that, to capture all of it, what we've heard today, what we heard in July, and then, and then move forward from there.
Commissioner Rogers, did you have any other input at this point?
Just two things to consider. One is that, again, and I appreciate the conversation on the vision. I, I, I don't really fully understand how resources and strategies have anything to do with an overarching vision. I, I, those are operational things and I understand that you have to have them. And I certainly don't take homage that they're being considered. It's just like, it's, this is a continuum and to me it's maybe a different process. And then, and then the other issue real quickly is a vision. One thing that I've noticed about this particular board of commissioners is that they are fairly far-reaching in their outlook on things. And so four to ten years, frankly, with no disrespect to anybody here, is a sneeze. I mean, that's not a really a long-term vision. And I would think that this board is very capable of looking at something other than a four to ten period. Because with your, with your resource allocations and your, and, and your tactics conversation, if it's that four or five years, you're already at the end of your vision. So I mean, it, it, it just seems a little short. I think we're capable of stretching a little further than that. So anyway, those are my comments.
I think that's a reasonable comment, I really do. So, thank you.
On the slide with the vision, strategies, tactics.
And, and one of the purpose, a purpose of that is that it, the vision is revisited on that sort of timeframe. But certainly I think it's really good feedback that there may be things that the board is looking well into the future.
Yeah, so I think that the years there is a little misleading because it makes it sound like that's the time horizon.
Appreciate that.
Every ten years we visit.
But to Roy's point, I, I think that there, there are things that we might consider would be to the benefit of the, of the community, the county, that would take a lot longer than ten years to accomplish. So there's the revisiting process, but there's also that looking out to the future, whether it be something like property taxes or resource funding is maybe a better way to, to look at that, so.
Yep, yep, ten years is too, too short.
Rachel, would you be coming back for, to the board to review or share with us the RFP? What's included in the contact for the involvement to do this work?
I'm certainly happy to do that if that's what the board would want to see. What I'm taking away from this is that, that what is what the board would like to see as a next step is some of that context of what we've heard develop, in terms of developing a vision or some of those, some of those basic tenants. Certainly always happy to meet with individual commissioners to provide more information. But really, we're, we're here to serve you and provide the information you need.
So Ms. Angie, we've, we've been through these kinds of discussions before. We need some plans to understand what your thinking is in terms of touchpoints with the board, with the community versus a, tell us what you want. And I think we went over some of that last July as well. So this is a terrific framework for helping us understand the pieces. I think what we touched on earlier is we need a plan for how there will be those touchpoints, both with us as well as with community. So that's where I've lost patience with the, well, we're here to ask you what you want, right? It's like, no, 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 I think we've, we've, we've given that feedback. We need you to go back, take this, which is a very informative structure and flush it out. So we have some idea of what twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three at least would look like.
Absolutely, Chair, there would be a complete project plan.
That's.
That would include, we just haven't developed that yet. That would include touchpoints with the commission.
Great.
Can I have one more thing, Chair Harrington, with you? This is something like ideal, you're probably thinking about this, Tanya and Joel, and it's probably a part of your work. But ideally, I think it'll be really advantageous for Washington County to survey the community. Similar process with the reapportionment, but not in the way, come up with a, collaborate with community organizations, perhaps try to be at every event, but get nothing like four hundred people giving us feedback. But a bigger number of our population actually contributing to that feedback. And I don't know what is a realistic number, but at least aim for certain, you know, fraction of the percentage of the community that live in Washington County. But I think it'll be really good to hear what they think the direction should be for in terms of strategic. But so I like getting the feedback, the reapportionment community, but it was really a small feedback. And, and I was, I kept wondering, you know, could we have done more? Of course, you know, hindsight is always perfect, right? You, there's so much you could learn after, but so just take that lesson and, but make it a bigger feedback. And I don't want to create more work for the equity office, but it might be a good task for them to say, you know, go get us a, at least ten thousand.
I, I think what we're going to see is a, a, a community that wants to engage in this, that this has great meaning, that this, this will, I, I'm, I'm expecting that we get really high community engagement. Whereas with reapportionment, I'm not sure that people cared as much, frankly. But I do think that they're going to care about this. That's my, that's, and, and I'm not a betting person, but I would bet on that, so.
Can I ask a question about this? Because I want to make sure that we, we have something for the community to respond to, right? I have found over the years that it's, it's just a proposal. And sometimes even when you mark something as a proposal, people will say, well, you've already made up your mind. And it's like, no, really, we just wanted to have something out there other than a blank sheet of paper. So this is an idea for an approach. You know, how do you see yourself as a community group, as individual members of the community participating? Given that we have just this three-phase plan thus far. And we have thoughts about doing, you know, qualitative testing and quantitative testing and go from there. So towards that end, I think what we're interested in hearing about, when you, slide fifteen, please. There was a question earlier about develop community outcome slash vision. What this stack structure for twenty twenty-three doesn't have is an initial community engagement plan. And I think that's what we have a thirst to see as a deliverable. As, so, I know I'm, I, I like the three-phased approach, but there are some elements missing in the twenty twenty-three work plan stack. Or you're interpreting the bullets a little differently than I am, okay? Much like we were talking earlier about an initial set of visions and tenants from the board, right? And fundamental ones that frankly, I don't see changing necessarily because of the fact that we are a county government and the nature of county government. And we've got to figure out how to, how to tell that story in a clear and meaningful way for our community. We're not going to be redefining what county government is, right, here in our nation. So maybe we should. Oh, good luck with that.
Oh, I'm tired already.
One, 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 if I, I also want to contribute something that I've been hanging on to thus far. I think we, right now, if you go to the Washington County website and you search for strategic plan, what you see is a draft discussion version from twenty twenty. It, I wasn't able to find the last adopted one. And I think that's a problem. So I like seeing the draft discussion one, but as pointed out earlier, it wasn't adopted. And so I'd like to see both.
So yeah, I guess you're, you're talking about the, what was that, the two thousand and the two thousand and ten one? And when there's probably some remnants in there that we could go back and look at and see how they would apply, yeah.
So, what, so colleagues, going back to this, we've noted a couple of things that we'd like to see flushed out so that we have a better idea of how we're approaching this. Because one of the learnings I've had, you know, it's, I'm both really excited by all this, right? Finally, some structure for this mega project that's really meaningful for us as we find ourselves here at the beginning of twenty, in the early twenty twenties, right? With all the challenges that, you know, this wonderful decade of ours brings. But I also have a lot of pent-up interest that got sidetracked thanks to COVID. Three years of pent-up energy. So that's, frankly, that's part of where I'm coming from. We, we did have a release valve in July of last year. And that was good and fun, but the remainder of twenty twenty-one didn't turn out anything like what we expected. COVID variant swept me at least off my feet again. And here we are in September of twenty twenty-two. And wow, what, how amazingly things have come. Things seem like a, we have a working normal now. Yay, and we can do these things again.
Crossing my fingers that you're correct.
All I can say is I've gotten my latest booster and my flu shot, so boy, do I feel prepared. So this is really exciting stuff. On the other hand, I look at the work we have to do as a normal course and this mega project on top of it, and I go, oh, oh, wow. But it's exciting at the same time. So how do we build that excitement here in our community to say, you know, this, this is really cool, this is really fun, but I'm a government geek. So how do we impart that same element of community meaning in people that are living very busy lives? Ooh, that's, that's something I'm particularly good at. Ooh, I hope we can hire that through our RFP, plus harness the great energy here through our staff. So in the end, I, I think we need another touchpoint that gives us a, a better idea of the work plan from our standpoint to build our confidence towards what, what this first column means for, how do we operationalize it in twenty twenty-three? And you have a lot of great elements in slide fourteen and fifteen, right? Because in fourteen, you have all the, the blue, those light blue things, the things that aren't necessarily visible to community, but are very much the kind of things that we have on our rolling agenda together. Twenty twenty-three is going to be really busy. What do you think, colleagues?
I I'm I'm good with this, where we are right now, and I I really appreciate the work that's been done. But I also agree that I'd like to see what the steps are underneath the bullets. And and it's, that's the next, the next piece. I don't know when that it, when we're, when we can put that into our schedule, so.
I think we're gonna have to. We need to have an early way to talk about this in Q one and Q two of twenty twenty-three. In talking with community about what this mega project is. And not waiting for all of our plans to be developed and the RFP to be completed. And what are we aspiring to have through this phased approach of a community plan? A strategic plan, sorry. And making sure that that early story. Delivers on co-creating with the community with that definition of community being various stakeholders. That I have been mentioned here today so that different groups can identify. With participating along the way.
And so the board is aware, we would be looking for a partner, a consulting partner. To help us develop that robust community engagement plan, develop and execute it. So. So an option is to go ahead and and get started with our RFP. And then have an opportunity to for board input on that community engagement plan once it's more.
Yes, but we need to be able to start talking about the strategic plan project no later than January of next year. So we're not going to wait for that RFP to be completed. We're not going to wait for a consultant to be on board. So as long as we're saying this, as long as we're in agreement, great.
So what I hear the next steps being is to work on the far left column, twenty twenty-three. Flush out further that work plan, clarify community engagement. What what does that look like? Come back to the board with what that plan is by the end of this calendar year.
And I that, I don't, I agree, and I don't think that that means it's set in stone. You know, when we get an RFP fulfilled, we may get advice that there's other ways to accomplish some of these things. And I for one am certainly willing to be flexible under good advice. So I think that just knowing that might be helpful in relationship to putting putting this out there.
Yeah.
All good plans can be amended.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to figure out how a a version number. Numbering scheme of some kind for adopted work plans. And I don't expect it to change. More than, yes, it will become more informed. But I think it would be good for the board to adopt a general work plan. And then as there are more deliverables, we. We update the recognition of completion and refinements. But I don't want anybody to be thinking that it's going to be changing more than once a quarter, right? That's an absolute. I think we've got to put a cap on that, because if we start changing it every single month, we're going to go crazy.
And I'm not talking about changing the plan so much as as when we have advice about different ways to engage the community or different. That's what we're, that's what we're taking advantage of.
Yep.
But our work plan should stay the same.
Yeah, fundamentally, though, we're the ones that have to cover the cost of the plan. So we are going to have to set the stakes in the ground in terms of what we do and how we do it. Because we have to approve the budget for it. Yeah.
And I just want to remind us that in a sense, we are talking to the public right now. So we've got, it it's, this is out there, the intention is out there. So I I expect we're going to get some public feedback as well, and that's, that's not a bad thing either. That's, that's why we do these meetings the way we do. So I'm excited about it.
Yay, we have a kickoff.
Are we done?
I think we're done.
I do. Commissioner Rogers, anything else? Hard to read your body language when we only see you from the nose up.
No, I'm sorry, trying to tilt all that. No, I I I did want to say one final thing as as.
Can we take the slides down?
As I I saw the comments and that, I listened to the comments. Not only are we defining what this is, I I think it's sometimes important to define what it's not. And a comment that struck me as interesting, a couple of them, one that. We're still a county government. I mean, i- if you went into certain circles, they would say. You shouldn't provide certain kinds of services at all, but that's not something that we can do just because of the function of who we are. The particular friction, I can tell you, has remained since I got over there in eighty-six. Between cities and incorporated areas as to, it's always amusing, you know, what what side you're on. And everybody's right, but if there's a sense that somehow this can be can be changed by the strategic plan. I think that we're making a mistake. The plan should be flexible enough to allow for things. But not be so dogmatic that it says that's the direction. And so I I'm rambling a bit, but it just struck me, I liked the comments where someone that said. Gee, we still are county government, we still provide certain things. And so what is this should not be about is is changing the basic formatting of what we do. Yeah, it's evolving. That that's a better way of saying it. It's just evolving it. Yeah, I like that. So anyway, that's my final comment.
I think I understand your point. We'll know more along the way. Cool, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Learned a lot. Wow, twenty twenty-three is going to be.
Busy.
Yes. Okay, does anyone else have anything for today? Nope, seeing none. Our roundtable is adjourned.
Wow, early.